No.
Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Can I get an approval or a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Now, we have some recognitions tonight. You're gonna see a familiar face. Carly, we're gonna have Tom present to you the Future Freedom Foundation Scholarship. Two students.
Hold on, we have the students sit here and I'll speak about them. Ella, head in, come forward, please. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Snowberger, thank you for the opportunity to recognize these two wonderful students with our Future Freedom Foundation Scholarship. Unfortunately, we missed the Elizabeth High School Award Ceremony on April 29th, and so, but we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize both Carly and Ella. First, the Future Freedom Foundation is an Elbert County-based scholarship program that provides grants, awards, and stipends to students that are high achieving, high in character, and have an affinity or support for the founding father principles of limited constitutional government, in God we trust, love of country, and free market economics. And so, first Ella, and we partnered with the Elbert County Republican Women, who is recognized or represented by Andrew Richardson, and their essay contest. And so, the scholarship for Ella is based on her submittal and the application. And she wrote, and she's gonna be attending the University of North Dakota for aviation in Fall. And Ella wrote in part, just a quick excerpt, "Politically, I believe the rules that are set for our Constitution, and more notably, the Bill of Rights, are imperative to our country's success. None of our privileges described in these documents should ever be revoked. The very building blocks of American society are built on the fact that we can speak, live, and create success for ourselves without the fear of government stripping away our earnings or rights. The right to speak freely, have fair trials, protect oneself, and own property are being threatened in today's society. I will take any actions necessary to protect these rights. I also feel it is up to the individual to create and maintain success for themselves, even if it is not easy." So Ella, on behalf of the Elbert County Republican Women and the Future Freedom Foundation, we present you this scholarship in the amount of $1,000. We're proud of your love of country and support of limited constitutional government. In God we trust. Congratulations. And of course, Carly is no stranger to the board, having served as the student liaison this past year. Also, both of them were valedictorians. And of course, Carly also was instrumental in bringing back invocation, or the blessing, as part of the graduation ceremony. Her mom, Gina, is here, and she's attending York University in Strategic Communications in the fall. So about five years from now, we're gonna get on a plane and Ella will be the pilot. And then, we're gonna read a magazine that's written by Carly. She wrote in her essay, and I'll just read an excerpt of that, "The United States of America has changed greatly over the past 250 years, in both good ways and bad. However, one thing remains certain, and to me, that is the foundation our country was built upon. We were formed as one nation, under God, indivisible, and sadly, our society is trying to change that. I'm proud to be an American. I'm blessed to live in a country where I am free, thanks to the military that fights for our freedom every day. Thanks to..." Don't look at me, I'm gonna cry. "...the law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders who protect me, and thanks to the government that hopefully ensures that I keep my unalienable rights." So Carly, on behalf of the Elbert County Republican Women and the Future Freedom Foundation, we present you with this certificate and $1,000 scholarship. We're proud of your love of country, support of limited constitutional government, and God we trust. Congratulations.
Sweet.
Yes.
Everybody squeeze in, please. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, and thank you for your great job.
Thank you.
Good job, girls. Congratulations.
Come on, we...
Thank you.
So next up, we have student athlete recognition. And I'd like to recognize Thomas Lee. He recently earned the state wrestling title in the 106-pound weight class. We're proud to present this certificate of achievements. And congratulate you on your hard work, perseverance, and your championship.
Do you wanna come around a little bit? Is that okay? If you can make sure to nest the torch there.
This may be on trial.
We're really excited. Thomas is a sophomore, so he has a few more titles ahead of him.
One, two, three.
Very cool. Congratulations.
One, two, three.
Congratulations, Thomas.
All right. We don't have anybody for public comment tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. So can I get a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.5 on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda has been passed. Now, we have discussion.
All right, so first item up is our representative from RTA Architects. If you guys would like to come on up to the front. RTA has been working with us over the past year on a master plan, looking at growth in the district and future facility needs. And so, we have appreciated their partnership. And coming into this like the game, Bill has done a lot of work with the team, and certainly appreciate his leadership during that time. We're gonna get an update on their work. And then, most importantly tonight, we're excited to have Shannon join us to talk a little about our growth, and Shannon's our demographer, so.
Yes, I'm Ken Gregg with RTA Architects. Been working on your master plan here for a bit. We've done some facility assessments. We've done some capacity analysis of all of your buildings. So we're really getting to know your district. And now, we're trying to meld what we know about your schools, what we know about the capacities in those schools. And we're trying to meld that with demographic information that we're working with Shannon Bingham on. Shannon Bingham is a demographer that works all across the state of Colorado. Will probably introduce himself here in a bit, but he's online there. If you go to the next slide, please. Right over here. There you are, next slide. So tonight, we're just gonna have a quick introduction of who we are. Kinda did that. We're a Southern Colorado architecture firm out of Colorado Springs. Twenty-six registered architects, staff of about 40. About half of our work is K-12 education. We work all over the state of Colorado. We're wholly, wholly made of Paradox. We know what Paradox is, so. We take pride in working with a lot of different school districts, not only in preliminary planning, but executing, you know, beautiful buildings that really impact students' lives. And so, we're excited to be here to tell you guys kinda where we're at with things. So I'm gonna let Shannon start here. We'll talk demographics first, and then we'll come back. And we'll talk about capacities, and then we'll talk about, you know, how they match up.
Well, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Can? Excellent. Well, it's a privilege to be here in Elizabeth. I appreciate the opportunity to present remotely. I was at another school board meeting earlier today, and appreciate the opportunity to be in two places at once. My name is Shannon Bingham. I own Western Demographics. I've been a school demographer in Colorado and all over the western US for about 40 years now, and have worked for well over 200 school districts, doing a variety of master planning, new school activation, efficiency studies, various best grant applications, bond packaging, growth forecasting. Currently, I'm working for Douglas County School District, Kiowa School District, Lewis Palmer School District, Falcon 49 School District, and Cherry Creek. So I've got you surrounded, basically. I've written to about 15 other districts in Colorado and other engagements in Washington State and Alaska. It's been a really exciting time for Elizabeth. I've never seen so much activity in town. Having been a watcher of the community for quite some time, we have, I don't know, a really significant complement of new commercial businesses in town. Lots of activity. Everywhere I go, I see children. Our population has steadily risen, as shown in this graphic, during the last 10 years to the tune of about 2,600 additional people, which is a little over 10% if you include 2022. So things have been moving very rapidly here in town. A lot of folks are looking for an escape from the front range, and our community represents that in a significant way, while simultaneously presenting a full palette of urban services to most residents, with shopping, groceries, all sorts of commercial opportunities, entertainment, and of course, very fine schools. So lots going on in Elizabeth, and I'm very bullish on the community for the coming decade. The next slide shows our population distribution. And you can see that... There we go. Oops, this is births. You can see we're in the midst of a rather robust baby boom. So since about 2012, when we had 86 births, we have grown to having about 190 in 2022. So that really suggests to me that our incoming population in ages 0 through 4, that will be coming in the kindergarten, we should be expecting growth. This is a different rest of the state.
Shannon, will you talk a little bit about where this data comes from? Just so that the board understands where you're collecting this data?
Sure.
And such.
So the population data is from the Census Bureau, and it's for the geographic boundary of the school district. And this birth data is from the Colorado Department of Health. So when a baby is born with a mom's address in the geographic boundaries of the district, they are counted by the health department as an Elizabeth school district birth. So whether there was a complex pregnancy involved, or whatever the circumstances were, obviously, we don't have a large hospital. So even though a baby may have been born in South Denver, they are recorded as an Elizabeth birth. Thank you. The next slide shows our population distribution. And you can see that in five-year age cohorts, and that's what these represent, our child population is the same size as our adult population. So you can see the four bars on the bottom, which show our 15 to 19-year-olds, our 10 to 14-year-olds, 5 to 9-year-olds. Those bars are the same size as our adult population, which ranges in age from 20 to 54. So you can see that we have a really strong student population in the district. Again, this data is for the census, for the geographic boundary of the district, whether it's in town or out in Elbert County. The next slide shows our historical enrollment. And you can see that in 2020, we had a 6.11% downturn, real similar to what everyone else in the state experienced. But by 2021, we basically got all of our kids back. So we got back 8.56%, meaning we got all of the kids we lost to the pandemic. And we also gained some students from new residential growth. So I would say that Elizabeth School District played country music backward better than anyone else in the state, and got a large amount of what was lost to the pandemic back. And so, again, my expectations for the future are rather strong, given how attractive we are as a child community. The next slide shows kind of some bad news from Freddie Mac. Basically, in, on about October 23rd, interest rates hit about 7.5%. So all over the state, about 2/3 of housing sales volume vaporized over about a 10-day period. So all of our districts, including Elizabeth, are in a, probably a 65% housing downturn. Most of us who are watching this trend are forecasting recovery down into the 5% interest rate territory by about May of 2024. And you may have noticed that the majority of the builders in Elbert County and elsewhere on the front range are very rapidly constructing vacant lot inventory in anticipation of housing, the housing market coming back and interest rates declining. But this graphic from Freddie Mac essentially just shows how the change in interest rates, continentum from 3% to 8%, pretty much cut about 60% of prospective new home buyers out of the market. And we are looking forward to a return to normalcy in that regard soon. The next slide shows a field inventory that I did in February while there was still snow on the ground. And also, I would say that that's not very different. I drove the district, I guess, five days ago, and revisited everybody, including sales offices. And again, we have a lot of lot construction underway. So down there at the bottom, you see KB in Elbert County. That's just the extension of Spring Valley Ranch that's to the, oh, I guess it's the northwest of Spring Valley Ranch, where they're just finished all of those vacant lots. And they actually have a model up now. But whether we're looking at Gold Creek Valley here in town, or we're looking at Spring Valley Ranch or Independence, everybody has a vacant lot inventory of 50 to 75 or 100 units now. And so, everyone's really poised to get started. There were almost 100 homes under construction during this inventory. And when I drove the district last week, I saw more than that under construction. So I think we're starting to see the beginning of a, probably about a 12-month return to normalcy. And we expect that that will be producing a lot of school-aged children for Elizabeth School District because of how attractive the community is as a family location. This next slide shows kind of the distribution of where our new developments are. So you can see a Legacy Village down south, proximate to town. You can see Independence over on the west side. And you can see Spring Valley up in our north-central area. So those developments are going to be the major players over the next 48 to 60 months, as far as new housing creation and student generation into the district. The next slide shows a detailed lot absorption schedule that I have developed, that shows my guesstimate that we're looking at probably, I don't know, about 1,000, 900, 1,000 new housing units in the town of Elizabeth over the next 20 years. And through 2030, we're probably looking at, I don't know, 400, 500. I have calculated student yield figures off of those 514 housing units. And I'm suggesting that we would get 133 elementary kids, 50 middle school kids, 67 high school kids from that housing that is proximate to Elizabeth, meaning close to the town core. The next slide.
Shannon, will you talk just a little bit about how you're correlating that data? Just high-level price point of house, yield of kid, based on birth rates? Can you correlate that a little bit for the board? So they understand how you're, sort of, a little bit of the method behind that?
Sure. So for the most part, we get a little over 6/10 of a student per house. So basically, for every 10 homes, we get about six students. About half of those are elementary-age students. And then, I have an annual absorption figure on house sales that I have developed in consultation with the sales offices, and basically, just watching what I see happening in town, and also in consultation with the town of Elizabeth and Elbert County. For large lot residential kind of custom homes that are out in the country, we generally get a lower yield. So my figures here don't include a combination or consolidation of all of that additional construction that's happening out on county roads. And basically, I justify that with the knowledge that we don't get as many children out of that housing as we do in the more affordable housing that's clustered closer to Elizabeth, and that is in Independence and Spring Valley, where most of those homes are in the $500,000 to $700,000 range, which is kind of the sweet spot for young families.
Thank you, Shannon.
Let's see, this next slide, again, I'm moving quickly because I don't know how much time I have. But basically, you see the Elbert County component of our growth. Independence and Spring Valley are pretty much neck and neck as far as what their apparent production will be. There are three builders in Independence. Spring Valley also has Century and KB. So everybody's broadly distributed among multiple builders. And I expect both of those subdivisions to do quite well. You see Elbert County West, which is farther to the very northern end of the district, and Moorestead, those are large lot residential. In some cases and in others, they are dense, single-family detached. But they're way out on the future at the end of the 2030 period. Those, I think EC West is owned by Tim Kraft. And I haven't really gotten much of a phasing expectation from him other than it's out there at least five years in the future. So that's where I put it. Based on what we know will happen, we're expecting probably about 488 additional students from the units that will be built in these kind of outlying subdivisions. 260 of those will be elementary, 98 will be middle, 130 will be high school. So over the 2030, or the eight-year range, I'm forecasting that we get about an additional 737 students distributed among our four neighborhood buildings and our charter school. And also, we have a little bit of kind of cohort decline as some larger grades are leaving the system. So all of that won't hit us as a net increase. It will be kind of buried in some other grade level dynamics that are happening in the forecast. Let's see, this next page shows vacant lots in Legacy Village. So you can see the red dots that don't have a house underneath them are, for the most part, vacant lots. So you can see a whole lot going on in Legacy Village filing too, right there. And so, that's where we will be seeing quite a bit of growth. There is other infill development. And so much happening in Elizabeth that I'm very optimistic that we'll be seeing children out of a lot of this new housing. This shows Independence, and you can see the vacant lots available. And not all of those are vacant. Some of these had filled in. So I think this was a snapshot as of mid-January, but lots of vacant lot potential in Independence. And on the next page, you see the vacant lot potential, including the big filing five that KB Homes is going to be building. They already have a model that's probably about 65% complete. And they're working on it feverishly, trying to get it ready. But you can see all of that vacant lot inventory that is now filled in. And back in January, I actually got out of my truck there and ruined my shoes, walking out to take a picture. So that has gone from being a muddy pasture to being a paved subdivision with water sewer, electrical, broadband stubs at every lot. So they mean business. And then you see the remainder of Spring Valley. So a lot of medium and smaller lot-sized attainable, single-family detached properties there. How we slice and dice that part of the county is something that the master plan team has been working on. But for the most part, we have about 460 students up in that area attending Singing Hills. And if you cut them in half, east and west, you get 260 and 200. So there are more, the more density, the farther west you go. But we could also slice and dice that north and south, or do other things to assign students to schools with room until we're able to construct a new space. The next slide shows just some photography over the, through the spring as I've been watching the development of the district. You see we have some multifamily property going up, which families are starting to find more and more attractive. Beyond the town core, as we move out into Independence, you can kind of see on the next slide some of their aggressive construction activity. They have just about finished their clubhouse. It's beautiful. The sales staff out here is beginning to move around as some builders are finishing some of these filings and moving on to other clumps of vacant lots. And then, out in Spring Valley, there's actually a bit more activity currently as a lot of what you're seeing here as bare ground is now finished vacant lot inventory. And quite a few homes were built in Spring Valley through the spring, especially with Century Homes. Lot of what I was watching as vacant lot foundations went to being framed houses. I've developed three forecasts here, a low, medium, and high, that show a student growth of 463, 728, and 1104, respectively, over the eight-year period leading up to 2030. We have space to continue to do business and accommodate families for the next three or four years. But after that, we're going to start needing to find seats, basically. Which of these forecasts do I believe in the most? I think the medium is probably the most likely. I think it will probably be relatively evenly divided between the two elementary schools as far as the growth goes. Maybe a little bit more in Singing Hills because there's 2/3 of the development is in the county. because there's two-thirds of the development is in the county. Uh, some of those folks that live up in those subdivisions do, however, uh leave us to go to Douglas County or to Cherry Creek. And um I don't have those stats uh for you tonight, but um I can provide that later. Uh, so that's my presentation, um. I would be delighted to um answer any further questions that you have and uh appreciate the opportunity to continue to be a student of your school district.
So one question I have is and you might have said this, but the numbers that you were throwing out there about coming in, does that take in to account the kids going out? So is the, you were splitting um Singing Hills, for example, two hundred, two fifty, something like that. Is that taking, that is on top of what we already have? Is that what those numbers are in addition? Okay.
Additional students based on the forecast.
Okay, so those are additional students and then has, um, I know the Elizabeth West got voted down, but is anybody taking into consideration that he's most likely going to uh Jim Marshall apartment?
Jim.
Yeah, is going to be building possibly uh twelve hundred homes in the town.
Shannon, did you hear that?
Elizabeth West, twelve hundred pound, twelve hundred homes with Jim.
Jim Marshall.
Jim Marshall.
Um, yes, I did, and I had a conversation with the planning director about that and um I think that may have the effect of um changing our year four through um eight absorption. Um, but at this point, I still feel really good about the numbers that I have uh because we, a- anytime we're talking about undeveloped land, we're at least three years away from the first new house. And given the interest rate environment that we're in, uh speculating on something that's just bare ground right now is going to be difficult and um I would say that if uh his development went as planned, we might lean more toward the high side of the forecast. Um, but for now, I think that um until interest rates normalize, we probably need to um uh do our planning based on the medium. Um, we're looking at probably three-quarters of Douglas County's volume uh has been consumed by the interest rate situation. And so I think we're all kind of waiting for things to come back before we start getting really bullish about forecasting. But um I was informed of the Jim Marshall development and it's my understanding that if everything goes as planned, that would probably equalize uh the volume between the northern part of the district and the southern part of the district. But again, it takes, it takes a long time to get a subdivision up and going, so um that might be a little bit more toward the middle to the latter half of our forecasting window.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
Yeah, go back one slide, it's real quick, oh, this real quick, yeah. Yeah, so this, this is a graphic map of the district and you can see we've got all the, the schools uh located, but we also have your two pieces of vacant land showing up there, so you can see that those are located more in the northern part of the, of the district, they're the white stars there. Um, the, the notes to the right are just uh maybe can let Shannon just said that you're gonna give three hundred and ninety-three additional elementary school students, uh a hundred and forty-seven, uh like the middle school and a hundred and ninety-six of the high school, which will set them up to set up across the district. And again, how Shannon was about how we slice back and how, you know, our next steps and trying to figure out how we, how we accommodate this.
So what we do when we start, go ahead, though.
Well, let's just, uh, I don't know much time Shannon has, Shannon, can you hang out for a bit? I just want to make sure if we have any other demographic question, we ask those before, if, if we potentially lose Shannon virtually here at one point. I don't plan on it, but just in case we do, do you have any other questions for Shannon from the demographics standpoint? Shannon, will you talk about, sorry, Ken, will you talk, Shannon, just briefly about what your next steps are? And then I'm um, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna frame it a little bit based on the work that you've been doing with Ken and I for the last ten years, so. Do we lose him? Shannon, you still there?
He's on mute.
Oh, you're on mute, Shannon.
Yeah, I'm gonna hang out just as long as I possibly can, but my next steps are to um see what the master plan committee asked me to do as far as modeling some scenarios uh based on selecting a school site or selecting both sites and asking questions about what would hypothetical enrollment be on a certain opening day. Um, also, um, uh, I don't know if you're going to ask me anything about middle or high school, but since we have one of each, uh, the forecast in that regard is relatively straightforward. Um, my remaining work is um some of the more kind of esoteric data and writing a written report. And then before I publish uh toward the um, I don't know, first or second week of June, uh maybe sooner, I will probably uh go out and do one more round of interviews with the Elizabeth Planning Director, the Albert County Planning Director, and maybe a sales associate or two um as I wrap up my document and um I, then I probably have a few things here and there in my tables uh that are missing, you mentioned the Jim Marshall development, so um I'll be adding that in and I've got a couple of other places where I have a few uh, a few missing items that I will um augment.
Just give you, so Ken and I and Shannon have been working together for fifteen plus years.
At least, but Shannon just most recently worked with us in Strasburg School District and there's a lot of growth going on in Strasburg, two home developments, several five hundred home developments. And I think last fall, Shannon missed his enrollment projection by five students. And so, you know, Shannon's an expert, been doing this a long time and been doing it in Colorado for forty years. And so when we start getting data back and we start looking at models, you know, Shannon's, you know, I'll, I'll toot his horn for him. He usually does a really good job of putting positioning districts so that we can anticipate where we're gonna be a couple of years from now. And if something major would shift, right, like, you know, something major would shift like we had with the interest rates or whatever, then, you know, simply we'd go back to Shannon and say, hey, Shannon, based on what you're seeing now, if something changed between now and May, we would ask Shannon what would happen and he'll give us an update, right? And give us, you know, fine tune at least his predictions as whether high, low, or medium, or high, low, medium, or high, and sort of give us some feedback on that. So it, it can be dynamic because there's external forces that are gonna affect it potentially. But if things trend like Shannon described as far as interest rates, stability, economy, you know, we're gonna see growth.
So let me ask another question, is there an adjustment uh based on the increase in people putting their kids in private school, charter schools, homeschooling? Has that all been somewhat accounted for?
Go ahead, Shannon.
Well, um, I generally forecast based on an equilibrium behavior. So most districts have a pretty consistent percentage of children that are in uh choice charter um and um online uh, uh, you know, segments of the market. And um what we've seen is that our charter school has been fairly stable and that um they probably have a charter with the board that has a fixed capacity. So um if you decide to expand their capacity or you facilitate um or, or, or they um uh plan to expand their facility and increase their charter, then I would need to know about that because that would be one of the market segments from which our growth would, would flow into. Now, we are remote enough from Douglas County that we don't have a lot of uh Douglas County residents coming out to go to our charter school. So I think our charter school is mostly um Elizabeth School District and some uh Kiowa School District residents. Um, and um, uh, but it's, I was not given information that they plan to expand their program. So I've been holding them steady and um, uh, so that's what my forecast is based on is equilibrium in our share of the market, um, meaning neighborhood versus charter versus private versus church schools. And then uh for our own charter, uh that they would hold relatively steady.
Okay, that makes sense, I just only, because I've seen the numbers in homeschooling go up, you know, over the last few years uh specifically, especially with COVID and everything, the, the numbers have really risen quite, quite high in the last few years, so I just didn't know if that was taken into consideration.
It, it went up dramatically during COVID, especially with uh children who were participating in online education. And um some of our eastern counties have uh sponsored online charters that have collected a pretty significant share of the market. But we've kind of reached a little bit of a plateau. Um, I think it will probably grow a little bit more, but for the most part, uh post-COVID, we've reached stability. And um I'm not expecting um a big percentage of our growth to um be absorbed by those providers.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Shannon, move on.
Well, I have a question here. So we're looking at growth, what, what is the timeframe that um when we can't accommodate the students in the schools that we have?
We're gonna share that, it's a great segue because we're gonna talk about capacity of your buildings right now.
This has been a concern of mine, I'm sorry, I lost my voice.
No, it's all right.
Um, this has been a concern of mine for two years, and so what, instantly, when you see growth, you gotta think about the kids.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely right. Go ahead, Ken.
So as part of the master plan, this, this is a, a floor plan diagram, we do this for all the schools. Um, and it's color-coded based on the use of the, of the, the spaces within the building. Um, the orangey-yellow is like general classrooms, the tan is preschool. Um, and then we have other special ed, specials such as STEM and those types of classrooms are in the green color. Um, so this is Singing Hills um elementary school. And the way it's being operated now, there's four classrooms that are being operated with, as special ed and STEM. And so we have to take that into consideration because they probably need those programs now, right? So if we pull those classrooms out from the overall capacity and, and not count those because those students are counted elsewhere, right, as part of a homeroom, um, we get what we call a functional capacity of four hundred and ninety-nine students at that school. And what we're seeing in the twenty twenty-three enrollment is four ninety-five. So we, we've actually um had a couple of meetings, we had a, a principal survey that was sent out to all the principals and they kind of marked what, how their building was being used and then we followed up with a, with a meeting online that actually um was a little, even a little bit more precise in terms of how the building is being used. But they were, they were clear, we, we had the numbers backwards for a meeting or two and they were like, that can't be right. And so we checked back and we actually had a, the number flipped, but we are right there and that is the, that is what they, you know, the principal said loud and clear, it's like, we, we think we're at capacity. Uh, you know, you could see it, the way they're using the building now. Let me, let me describe if, if, for an example, there was a lot of pressure.
More of their classrooms for special ed and some of those.
Those are additional offerings, there's a flex classroom and then there's a STEM classroom you can see down there on the south. Um, so when you get the functional capacity of this school, we're running a little bit lower student ratio in these rooms because they're triangular shaped and we just felt that it needed to be a, be a little number, so we're using a twenty-three count uh for this, but we get to a functional capacity currently how the building's being used, uh four hundred and thirty-four and the twenty twenty-three enrollment was three hundred and eighty-two. So there's a little bit of space here, but not a lot, right? Fifty students here, you know, ish. Um, so again, even uh Running Creek is getting, is pushing the limit. One of the things I would say about the elementary.
Elementary schools too to look at is the cafeteria, it's all pretty small, so we, we try to push those out, they were already a little bit small, and I would say that about the middle school as well, that's a constraint for the middle school. Uh, doing the same kind of thing, middle schools are a little bit different in that we count all of the available teaching stations. Um, and then we take a percentage of that based on how the school's being operated in terms of their schedule, right? So if they're using, we're in six out of eight periods, um, then that relates to a seventy-five percent utilization. And so that's the number we're using, so when we count all the available teaching stations in the building, they get tied to that point seven-five, we get a, a functional capacity of six hundred and twenty-one and the current moment is four eleven. So there's a little bit of, of room there, but I would say, but we've already heard from the principal that the school already has crowded corridors and you can see the cafeteria space in the middle and hallway, you have crowded spaces based on a certain number of lunch periods. You'd have to extend the number of lunch periods, that's hard on those students, right, either you're eating too early or you're eating too late. And so, um, that's one of the things with the middle school, it's kind of a constraint, it's definitely the cafeteria size. And, and the gym, uh, the gym's a little bit smaller as well. But in terms of teaching stations and uh functional capacity, you, you can put more students. So the high school's fairly similar, um, again, taking all the, the teaching stations that are available, times that seventy-five percent utilization, we get to a, a number of nine hundred and forty-one, uh, and your current enrollment is six seventy-two. Again, quite a bit of play there, um, with our high school. Um, so there is a little bit of capacity at the high school. They've noted some similar challenges in lunches as well, where they were asked to grab a lunch that started really early. That's right. Even though they had a pretty good sized commons, that's, that's a, that's a connection. If they were to hit that nine hundred and forty, that's right, yeah. And you guys, and you guys have had more, more students in the building, so, yeah, so certainly.
Back up, so, so the one, the, the one thing that, as Ken said, there's, you can deal with it, look at it from.
I see standpoint, but the other, when we talk about cafeteria and gym space and whether we have science, enough science rooms or maker spaces or even career technical education, that's sort of, we're sort of more akin to uh educational adequacy, like can we deliver good, high-quality instruction in that building based on the spaces? And so as part of the master plan, what we're talking about at the middle school and the high school specifically is like, what does our STEM program look like, what's our career and technical education? Are we really being able to deliver the kind of instructional needs that the community wants? And that the students sort of yearn for right now in those schools based on their current configuration? So we have some capacity, which gives us some flexibility to sort of do some things internal to high school to help with that. We don't have as much opportunity at the middle school where we're gonna have to look at the middle school, probably do more there to make, to make it really work. But you can see as the elementary schools, we're already pushing up against where we don't have enough capacity and they're strained because we don't have big enough cafeterias, right? We don't have enough special ed spaces, you know, there's a real pressure in the district for preschool. Universal pre-K is one of the, you know, you know, there's over thirty thousand preschoolers in Colorado that can't get preschool care right now. And, I mean, that's one of the things that they're dealing with and everybody's looking for that, right? And so you want to be able to offer that, well, as we push capacity up, it's even harder to offer. You can't add another room for preschool because you don't have space right now. So we have a real sort of constraint at our elementary school level right now that we're gonna have to deal with based on our trends.
Well, I, I think it's obvious.
Yeah.
It probably is for you guys.
Priorities need to go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Other questions, other questions related to that, before we go to schedule, ask us other questions about, if you have other questions about capacity. So the other thing I would say, we're, we do functional capacity and we, and we don't look at capacity buildings as a static number is because your demographics change, your needs of your students change, we have more preschoolers, so we need more space. We need more special ed because there's this gap from COVID, from learning. And so we've had more of a need for special ed, for reading intervention, math intervention, to get everybody back on grade. And so you can't just think, oh, this building's just got this capacity because it changes based on the needs of your students a little bit. Maybe one classroom here, two classrooms there, but it's not gonna be like your capacity's gonna change by a hundred and fifty students or something. It's gonna morph by thirty or maybe sixty per year based on the instructional model that you're trying to deliver to your community, right? But the challenge is definitely there. Ken, you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, so real, so real quick, um, we had a.
A basic approach to the master plan, we're through sentences, we've had four uh planning advisory team meetings and we're in kind of that master plan development. Uh, we reviewed some really high-level kind of trying to figure it out kind of a, you know, maybe we do this. maybe we do this or maybe we do that. We don't have any definitive to share with you guys, but you can see where we are today. We're in the middle of the development phase. We're thinking that the completion phase would be between August and September, which could include information that would help define a project that you could potentially go for a best grant in. And so there's preparation for that best grant late in the year, culminates in probably February grant application in 24. And then through 2024, we're working together to basically come up with a possible bond. So we would provide bond assistance at certain period of time through that, that process and.
So just keep in mind, you pass a bond and if you pass a bond or you decide to use some other finance mechanism, right, to give participation or a grants or other things that we're going to do, it's going to take about 18 months from the point of when you get the financing in place before you would have a building online.
So if you, if you consider something in November of 24, you're looking at August, you're looking at August of 26? You're looking at August of 26 and based on, you know, Shannon's projections, we're going to be putting some pressure on your buildings, especially at the elementary school level, that we're going to have to come up with at least an interim plan. And I know that Dan and Bill have talked about this already, that, you know, there may be an opportunity to start thinking about more of a push in model for special education as opposed to a pull out where we get a couple of classrooms maybe back online for instruction and we deliver a special ed a little differently in the buildings in order to alleviate some of that, but still can't make cafeteria any bigger, right? And so there's some other things that we can't fix. So it takes time. So there's no easy button after the bond is passed to deliver a building quickly. So keep that in mind as you guys are sort of strategizing a little bit.
What about modular or the gap?
Yeah, and there's a possibility that always the thing with modulars is everybody says they're temporary and then they're there for 20 years, right? And so that's a district, that's across the state, across the country probably that we look at it that way. And, you know, they're, they're not as efficient, right? From a mechanical, electrical built, how they're built, it's not as safe because those buildings are freestanding, they're not part of the original building, right? So they're separated. If you add enough of them, then we don't have enough restrooms in them, in the building because we have to have restrooms to support those students. So then they have to be wet modules, so now they get more expensive. And so you're spending, you know, $250,000 to $300,000 for a couple, for a couple of classrooms and it's sunk cost that, you know, it never gets any more valuable than the day that you paid for it and put it on the site and it just becomes, you know, sort of a, yeah, it becomes sort of an anchor around your neck at some point. You can absolutely do it, you can rent them. There are some districts that have been in the situation, you rent them, you rent them for a couple of years and then you get rid of them as opposed to own them. So that, yeah, there is some, there is some flexibility. If we get in a challenging situation, then the district.
Yeah, I just meant, it's, you're saying all of this takes time. So it sounds a little dire in the elementary realm that if the push came to shove, if we were in kind of an urgent need, that.
That would be the solution.
Be an option.
That's correct. That is, that is the quickest, easiest solution.
I think Frontier offers us some potential relief for Running Creek, but not for Singing Hills.
Right.
So if we were able to bring preschool classrooms online at Frontier again, we could recoup some classrooms, but our growth is at Singing Hills and that's.
And Independence, they're right around the corner.
Yeah, in that, in that side of the district.
It's all right. Dan, I think that it's obvious.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Very obvious what we need to do. So, yeah.
It's obvious.
Hey, gentlemen, this is Mike Callahan.
Is there a way we can get a copy of the entire slides? I have a PDF that goes through page nine and it didn't show the breakout of the schools and the capacity they're at now and what we have, you know, as additional capacity. Can we get a copy of the full slides?
Bill, yours. Bill's sending it right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely. That's it from us. I'm sorry it took so much time.
No, important information.
Very informative.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you, Shannon.
I just wanted to thank these guys for all the work that they've been doing with our team and also just to reiterate one of the main reasons, one of the many contributing factors towards the decision to move forward with our team is also the support in regards to moving forward with the bond issue or best grant. They have a lot of experience in that.
So is that something?
We have.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've done a lot of them, a lot of them for a long time. So, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our next item. All right, our next item is our budget discussion. I'll invite Rebecca up. I do want to just compliment Rebecca on her work. We'll say Rebecca came in mid-year in December and has taken over and obviously drinking from a fire hose as well, just trying to get up to speed on the past budget work in the district and where we are. So I just do want to take advantage of the opportunity to say thank you for Rebecca's work on this. Rebecca's going to walk us through, you have a number of different pages. If I could just touch base on that. We as a district have, have, have kept a lot of things in the general fund. And so you'll see as Rebecca goes through that we are moving some things out to other funds so that we can track separately, like capital investment, capital reserve, you know, we're saving money for roofs, but leaving that in the general fund is a risk of that being spent on other things than when that roof needs to be replaced. And so, so you'll see some creation of some funds that we will start using. You'll also see a greater breakdown in the budget. Superintendent's budget will be more transparent, communications, board. So instead of everything being lumped together where it's very hard to know what we spent in what areas, I really am excited about the work that Rebecca's done to separate out some sub-funds or sub-accounts or whatever the right word is so that we can track better. I think all of this, knowing that we are going to have to, based on the last presentation that our voters at some point, and we're hoping that the transparency and really making sure that our budgets are very clear will allow us the opportunity of earning that trust for our voters to then support us. I do want to talk about budget adoption process. We will, this is a first opportunity for the board to see where we are at this point. It is by no means there yet. We're not crossing our Ts and dotting our Is tonight that this is ready for approval, but it's awfully darn close. It's come a long way, some of you, in agenda setting, so a different version, you'll see it's come a long way even since a few days ago. We will need to, on the next meeting on June 12th, provide a public opportunity for public feedback, objection to any of our budgetary things. So for anyone watching at home, really want to make sure you know that at June 12th, if there's any things that you see in our budget that you have concerns with, that's your opportunity to come forward and provide that public feedback to the board before the board is then asked to formally adopt the budget. So we still have at least one more meeting to go. We may very well be ready for you to, after that public hearing, adopt the budget on the 12th, based on feedback that you may or may not hear from our community. At the very latest, it'll come back to you on June 26th for formal adoption. So we'll let Rebecca walk through it tonight and certainly ask any questions that you might have. Anyone in the public who has questions, certainly reach out to Rebecca or myself and we're happy to sit down with you and answer any specific question between now and the board being asked to formally adopt. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thanks, Dan. So I, I'm just going to kind of ad lib a little bit because we have so many new board members. I know you two kind of were here during the mid-year revision and there were some not-so-fun surprises. So we, we had some, some major adjustments and we weren't in as great of a position as we would have liked to have been at mid-year. So we started with that in mind to just kind of regain some traction and start things moving in the right direction. So Dan kind of gave a little preface here, there's going to be a lot of changes in how the layout of the budget is between the current year and the 23, 24 school year. This is really to emphasize transparency and simplify the budget so that it's easier to understand and easier to get a snapshot of things at any given time. And obviously our goal is to try and be as accurate as possible, but we also want to make sure that we're having adequate expenditure budgets because of the appropriations requirement that we have. We would rather overestimate those budget expenditures on the expenditure side so that we never go over appropriations. That's, that's a big no-no. And then we, we basically want to underestimate or try to get as close as possible with the revenue so that we don't get in a similar situation as last year where we overestimated those development fees. So I just kind of want to walk through, I'm starting with the general fund, which is the Fund 10. It has the biggest changes and then we'll go to all the secondary funds that are the smaller funds. So I'll start at the very top with the beginning fund balance. So this is an estimate of where we're at based on the mid-year revision. So I'm working on the final supplemental budget, which will be the last budget that we approve for the year. So this number for the beginning fund balance estimate will change a little bit between now and next month, most likely, once I get some more figures kind of projected out for the rest of this current school year. And so basically that I just wanted to kind of let you know that's, that's based on where we were with the mid-year and then we'll, we'll tweak as time goes. The next section is revenues. And so I'm just calling out a few things that, that are a little different here. So UPK or preschool funding, I did not account for that revenue in here yet. So that is one source of revenue. It's a very new program. We don't exact, have exact numbers from the state, especially for full day. They keep kind of hemming and hawing depending on what the final number of students are. And then we also have raised our preschool rates. So essentially I have not estimated what that is yet. So all that will be is a positive impact to the budget. It will be revenue for us. We just don't know how much yet. Pupil count, I also wanted to just let you know that the, the very top three lines under revenue, the property tax, state equalization, and specific ownership tax are what equals our school finance funding. Specifically, the state equalization is the one that will change the most. Based on the demographics projection, we are looking at over 90 students next year in addition to what we currently have, but to be conservative, we wanted to just do 50. So if we do actually realize that full 90 plus students, that will be additional revenue as well. It looks like that would be approximately $400,000 more if we actually hit the 90-student level. But that's something that I'll revisit once October count happens and we get the actual numbers in and that will, is when they'll retroactively update our state equalization funding as well. And then improvement fees, I kind of touched on this already. It's been a really great revenue stream for us in the past few years, but with the economy and everything that's happened, it really dried up this year. So as a result, I'm dropping that budget down to just $100,000. It would be great if it picks back up, but I don't want to count on money we don't have yet. Any questions so far on the beginning fund balance and the revenues? All right, now I'm going to switch over to kind of the expenses and the money going out.
Just again, summary is about $2 million more in revenue this year over, over last year. Is that correct? That number?
That is, that is correct. However, we also, it's a little skewed and I'm going to get to that here in a minute just because we, it's, it's about $2,000 more for just these categories. Our overall general fund is considerably less because we're taking out a little over $3 million in revenue of grants and we're moving those. So I'm going to kind of touch on that here in a minute. So if you're looking fund totals, it's going to look less, but in just these categories, it is more. Does that make sense?
Rebecca?
Yeah.
This is Mike. I have a.
A question or two. So the beginning fund balance, you said you're going to adjust. Is that likely to go down then based on accruals?
It has a potential to, yes, but I'm hoping not because we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room. So I've been working on that this evening in, in the back and today, so I should have more definitive numbers in the next few days to know exactly where this is going to go. I know we are not spending everything that I have budgeted for all expenditure line, so I'm hoping it weighs, the ins and outs kind of weigh out in the end and it will be very close, is my hope.
Okay.
And also in here, we also had $350,000 from our self-insurance fund where we stopped doing our own health insurance last year and we kept money in there for this year to pay out those claims. So there is potential for this to actually maybe go up because of that money, because we were able to recapture some, some of that into the general fund, but we also have had some additional sped expenses and a few other things that have kind of added. So I just need to get my head around those numbers here in the next couple weeks.
Okay.
My second question, you said with the appropriations, we want to be conservative or under budget for revenue. Is, is this current revenue budget considered under budget, I guess?
So, yeah. My, my philosophy is to be very conservative on the revenue side and overestimate on the budget side because as far as appropriations go, just how, how school districts work, we are not held to appropriations on revenue, we're only held to appropriations on expenditures. So that's where you still want to be as close and as accurate as possible, but you have to really focus on making sure that you cover any possible expenditure that will hit within the year so that you don't find yourself in trouble with the state for not having the appropriations approved by your board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? All right. Then I'm going to move on to the allocation. So just super high level, the legacy allocation is just an estimate based on their per pupil revenue with ours going up, theirs goes up as well. So it's just a high level estimate for what theirs will look like. And then the transfers to other funds, I'm just, I'm just going to really quickly touch on those because I'm going to go into more detail on the two funds that we're transferring to. The Fund 23, that's been our biggest transfer out of Fund 10 in the past and that is our pupil activity account or pupil activity fund. So I'm going to kind of go into my, my thought process on that when I get to Fund 23. Fund 43 is a new fund. I'm also going to go into detail on that, but we are transferring 1.17 million dollars out of the general fund into that capital fund reserve and I'll go into more detail about that soon. And then expenditures, so salaries, these are just going up based on everything that you guys have already approved. So it's all of those salary increases. And then the benefits, we were really excited to be able to offer some more benefits that were a good option to our staff this year. So this was based on assumption that more staff would take advantage of those, so that would ultimately be a higher cost for us, even though the individual plans were very close in, in price. Some even saved us money.
I think for our public, it's important to note that, you know, while we anticipate in the funds outlined here, $2 million more in revenue, 1.5 billion is going out to salary increases. So I think it's important for our public to know that we really have prioritized that, recognizing the challenge of retention and recruitment.
And then I think Dan already alluded to this expenditure breakout, which is, is the last section on the first page. The locations, which is in that very first column that starts with like 101 is Running Creek and it goes down, you'll notice that we've added quite a few of those. So we also want to keep things more broken out so that you guys can see and have more transparency and understand where everything is going. So we've added location 610, which is curriculum and instruction. We have added 620 communications, which was previously lumped in with the Board of Education and Superintendent's budget. We've also broken out the Superintendent's budget, so it's no longer lumped in with the board. Human resources has its own location. It used to be part of my budget in the business office. And then safety and security also has a budget based on, that used to be. And then Safety and Security also has a budget based on, that used to be just in the generic district-wide budget. And then the reallocation of our school expenditures. So you'll notice if you're looking at the comparison of the 22-23 budget line to the 23-24 budget line, you'll see a lot of the school budgets went down quite a bit. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we kind of changed our theory in how we do those. They're based on a per pupil amount for their operational budget, and then a lot of the things have been pulled out to go under curriculum so that we can align our curriculum vertically and horizontally. So it's not that they've lost that money, it's just been kind of shifted into a different budget to align those philosophies. And then as far as the district budgets, we moved to a zero-based budget policy this year, so everybody had to fight for their money. They had to justify and come up with their budgets instead of just, this is what you had last year, you get to spend it again. So it really encourages that frugality and good stewardship of the money and keeps from perpetual overspending. And then our prior year numbers, since there's so much happening, you'll notice that some of the 22-23 are blank, or some of them were kind of my best estimate since we didn't have things broken out before, so just know that those, once we have a set budget layout, that will become more consistent in how we can look at those numbers and be more comparable.
On facilities, notice it did drop 212,000, but that's because of the capital reserve fund that we started to transfer out at the beginning. So anything that's major capital expense now isn't in the budget for facilities, it's now accounted for.
Same situation with transportation. So, all right, so that is everything that I have broken out. I'm going to talk about the, on this very last page, the reserves. I'll talk about that when I get to Fund 43 because I moved some of those out so that this will more accurately reflect our actual fund balance. Any questions on Fund 10?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
So on the reduction of funds allocated in accounts 101, 102, 103, 104, 201, and 301, what, is that just, is that all curriculum or what else is that? Because we're increasing a new account of curriculum for 300,000 because we're pulling that back to the district, but we're reducing the spending to the schools.
Mike, we have been extremely generous in the past with allocating large amounts of money to our schools. That has included any capital expense, pouring new concrete pads, playground equipment, et cetera. All of that's being re-centralized as well. So, you know, we've had situations, again, no ill intent, but where things have been done at schools without our director of facilities knowing. We really want to make sure that we create a system where our facility improvements are also being tracked, that we, you know, follow all of the processes to make sure. So within those funds that are being recovered, they're being reallocated into departments that then will support them on those facility improvements as well. So curriculum is a large portion, but there are other aspects in the budget too that now are coming under a central control to ensure consistency and process.
Yeah, there's a couple other things other than that as well. So a majority of our grants fell under district-wide, however, there are some, like for example, the two preschools, 103 and 104 locations, the majority of that drop is like probably over 90% was all loss of a grant that was put there. And also, a lot of our capital expenditures that actually were budgeted at the locations also came out of there as well, especially at the high school. So it's kind of a conglomeration of not just moving the curriculum and instruction pieces out, but also moving grants to a separate fund and capital reserves to a separate fund. It's all pieces and parts that give you that total.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Transportation buses. I know we discussed it. I saw it in the budget. So what are we looking at in buses?
So we're looking at 400,000 in buses, which is approximately three buses right now, so three new buses. We have $150,000 right now in the transportation budget for lease payments that we committed two years ago for buses that we currently have. So we're still making payments on buses that have been used for the last, I think it's...
2018.
Yeah, 2018, so about...
But we're moving advances to replenishing the bus.
So, yeah, so we have three buses right now in the capital improvement funds. We'd like to get to four as we continue to scrub the budget. If we can increase that amount, we certainly will. But as of right now, we know we can purchase three buses. The likelihood of them coming in during the budget year is slim to none, but that's why putting it into the cap reserve fund allows that money to be there when the buses actually arrive. So we're not going to gamble on them not arriving in time for this year. The money's going to be set aside one way or the other.
But we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, we are moving, yeah. We'd like to move faster, and like I said, we have two more payments on the leased buses that were purchased five years ago. That'll end in 2025, and then that's 150,000, which actually would buy another bus. So we're paying as if we're buying a new bus every year for buses that we've had in service for five years.
Thank you.
All right, then I'm going to move on to Food Service Fund, which is Fund 21. So this fund also has a lot of uncertainty because of the new legislation that passed regarding the free lunches in the state of Colorado. So what's really important for everyone to know is that the revenue still comes from federal money first. So if they're free and reduced and they still fill out that application, federal money kicks in first, and then basically the state of Colorado will backfill that funding. So ultimately, the students will receive free lunches. We'll still have à la carte items, but I think that's only at the high school. So basically, that's a very minimal amount of money coming in other than what's coming from the state or federal funding. So I have kind of adjusted, you'll notice that I shifted things from sales to state aid and keeping things similar, but until, I'm basically going to be keeping a really close eye on this through the year, and we'll have to make some mid-year revisions because there's too much unknown at this point, but this is my best guess based on the information that I have at this time.
And just remember, you did authorize the purchase of a box truck, and that's because we had quite a fund balance here from the COVID days where we were serving kids lunches here in our school district where many weren't. And so that fund balance is actually being reinvested into the program through the purchase of that new truck.
That is correct, yes, and that is captured in the schedule. Any questions on food service? All right. Next one is our Grant Fund, Fund 22. So we have had a Fund 22 for quite some time, however, most of these grants were actually still being recorded in our Fund 10, our general fund. So to provide more clarity and transparency, plus we also now have a Grant Coordinator that will be managing all of our grants, so this is going to keep everything really concise for her to be able to keep track of all of that and delineate everything from the grant projects. So we have moved more out of general fund into Fund 22. And basically, this is another one that will vary greatly between now and the mid-year revision because we don't know, we've been applying for a ton of grants. Usually, you don't get your grant award letters until partway through the first semester, so we'll have all of those numbers to be able to update with what our actual number of grants and what dollar amounts we're going to have based on that mid-year revision, but this is just a good start to get us going.
If I can, moving these to a separate fund also prevents, like, you know, Mike's noticing, wow, that's a major swing. Well, if there's grant money in the school account and it drops, we're not being very transparent with the community about why that dropped. It looks like we took money away when in fact the grant just expired. And so keeping grants out of our general budget will allow that comparison year after year, so our community can see exactly what we've allocated schools and the consistency by which we do so.
And you'll also notice that beginning fund and ending fund balance are always zero in Fund 22, that is by statute, so we cannot carry over any balances in Fund 22 at all. Even if you have a grant that carries from year to year, it has to basically be in a receivable or an unearned revenue, which is balance sheet accounts, and you can't carry any actual revenues and expenditures over. So, little accounting lesson. Mike probably already knows all about that. All right, so any other questions about Fund 22? All right, Fund 23 is our People Activity Fund. So this is basically what holds our extracurricular activities, like athletics and other activities like marching band and all the different extracurriculars. It is not self-sustaining. It is very heavily subsidized by the school district, and we transfer from the general fund every year. We are reducing this year from 750,000 to 650,000 to try and cut some expenses. So it's about a $100,000 budget cut for the 23-24 school year. I will say, I've already done the end-of-the-year projection, and I think we're actually going to come in under the 750,000 this year, so I'm actually lowering that to 720. So by the time this comes through for the adopted, that'll be adjusted, but I don't think we're going to actually have to transfer 750 this year. So it won't be quite a $100,000 cut, but basically, we just want to get a little more frugal in where we're spending our money for the student, or pupil activities. Any questions about that? Okay. Now let's do activity, which is our Fund 26. So this is basically all non-taxpayer dollars, so it's money that comes in from other places, so donations, things that constitute our principal's discretionary, field trips, book fairs, those are like the big types of things that are in this fund. I left this exactly the same static as last year. It's one of those things, we do not supplement this fund at all or subsidize it from the general fund, and so basically, they only have whatever they bring in to be able to use. Any questions on this? Okay. Capital Reserve, so this is where we're going to talk about your buses. So this is new, we're creating this fund, so that's why you don't have anything in the 22-23 budget column other than what I pulled from the reserves piece that we had previously. So we're going to transfer 1,170,000 from the general fund. That will constitute 400,000 for three buses. It will also include the best grant requirements for the roof replacements for singing hills in the high school. And then it also has 200,000 that we have yet to determine how we're going to use those for capital needs at this point. We have a long list. We're waiting to see how Schneider plays out, and then we'll figure out what else we're going to spend that 200,000.
So with Schneider, you'll remember that they will propose a program where they save us money, take them home to do some maintenance. Until we determine what we're going to do there, we don't know, we can't tell you for sure what we're going to be able to do.
We'll cover it at a different time.
Correct, yeah. Before the end of the year, we'll be able to go over that in greater detail.
But this still holds that 200,000, so we can put it towards some type of capital needs. All right. Any questions about Fund 43, Capital Reserve?
Now, that will not count towards fund balance, and that's important for our next conversation after we're done with budget, is that money is put into the capital reserve fund and basically, based on your approval of capital projects, that's where that money will come from. It will not count towards our reserve, meaning in our emergency day fund. So it's important to note that because you'll see some major change from how things were reported in the past to how things are reported moving forward, and that's going to be a key part. We used to say that roof fund was part of our reserve. Well, we know what it's for, so it's a really reserve. Are we really going to spend it on something other than the roof down the road? Obviously, we won't want this, so.
Perfect.
All right, and then last one. I know this is dry material, so the last one is Self-Insurance Fund, which is our Fund 64, which I already alluded to this as well. We stopped having self-insured health insurance last school year, but we had some kind of carryover outstanding claims that we had to pay out throughout the year. As a result, those have pretty well dried up, and so we were able to move a good bit of our fund money over into the general fund and recoup some of that, which is helping with our current fund balance situation. However, we're going to be in the same boat with one more year of paying out dental claims now that we've switched dental over to CEBT. So we'll need to hold this fund open for one more year to be able to pay out any outstanding claims, and then we'll be able to recoup anything that's left at the end of that year and just move it back over and close this one. So this represents basically 50,000 we're going to leave sitting there to pay out any of those claims as the year goes on, and that's about it. Nice. Any questions?
No comments. A comment is, I love that we are breaking down things for transparency because that has been a problem in the past because you've just, you've got this huge umbrella that covers this, but you don't know what's under that umbrella. And I think this just makes it really transparent to our community, to our parents, the taxpayers, to show them exactly where we're spending our money.
Yep.
I agree. Yeah. This is great.
Rebecca, I think I misunderstood. Did you say this is dry material?
This was like your thing, right? Mike can't answer questions. Anything else I can answer for you guys? Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
So our next item is about our fund balance. So if I could draw your attention back to the bottom of the Fund 10 account, you'll see that we have two reserves that are left as true reserves. We have our Tabor Reserve, which is 3% of our budget. The Colorado law requires that we reserve 3% of our budget. Very limited circumstance by which we could spend that, but we have to show that we have at least 3% of our budget. And per board policy, you, or the board, I should say, not you, because I don't think any of you voted on that, but the board has indicated we must reserve 2% additional. So right now, those two amounts come to 1.19 million. So if next year, the state instituted an increased budget stabilization factor, which is basically robbing for public education to balance the state budget, we would have 1.19 million to survive, and really, we only have 534 because very few circumstances were allowed us to dig into Tabor. So the 534,000 is what I'm expressing concern to you about, is, you know, districts during the recession in 2008 who didn't have a reserve ended up cutting significant programs. Art and EDP at the elementary school in many districts went away. Sometimes CTE programs went away because, again, you couldn't sustain that level of staff when the state all of a sudden took money away. We're owed over $30 million due to that budget stabilization factor since it was instituted in the early 2000s that we'll never see. They're not going to give that back to us at some point. We're still shorted about $700,000 a year because of that budget stabilization factor based upon what the Finance Act says we should be funded and what the state's able to fund. So it's important to note that because, again, many taxpayers may say, well, why don't we just fund our money? That's the kids' money that are here today. Well, the worst reality would be that, come forbid, the state hits a recession next year and we have to cut massive programming for our kids. Our kids would suffer much greater in that case. So your current policy DB, you have a redlined version of that. Currently, this policy is where the board has outlined that you must reserve 2% in addition to Tabor. And again, because of the cap reserve of the roof and things like that, we've looked like we've had a larger fund balance than we really have. And again, you know, if we're setting aside money for the Elizabeth High School roof, I want to make sure that when that roof needs to be done, we haven't dipped into that and borrowed from it and found ourselves now needing to figure out how to replace the roof. So those funds, it's one of the reasons why we've separated that into our capital reserve fund because we want to make sure that that money is there. When we hit the cost of replacing the roof, we won't continue to accrue more money, but we're going to continue to add each year until we get to that point at which we actually have the roof covered when in fact it needs to be replaced. So I'd like to propose a couple of things, and in the draft I've given you, I've given a number of 10%. And in the draft I've given you, I've given a number of 10%. I will tell you that to get there, actually, to get to 7%, which is 7% plus a 3% Tabor reserve, would take us setting aside $350,000 a year. When you look at the bottom line of our budget this year, with the modest salary, we've done good on salaries, but we know we're not there yet, we only have $244,000 left. And so, so if we left it even at 7%, the reality is that realistic for us, knowing that we want to continue to increase salaries, we want to reform our compensation system, which is going to take an investment. So I'm going to ask you to think about this. This obviously isn't a night that we're passing this, but we want to think about a number here, and then a time period by which we would get there. And I think this is important for the board to really drive that fiscal accountability long-term in the district. This policy says that it can't be used, that the budget that Rebecca and I bring to you could never spend that money that's reserved without your permission. So there is that ability in a year where, okay, we're losing teachers, we've got to do something. The board can say, we give you permission to use 2% of that, but we couldn't bring you a budget that would propose that, and you would have to direct that. And so this policy outlines a percentage to do that. I've recommended a four-year timeframe, but again, Bill was doing some quick calculations this afternoon. If we changed that to 7%, which would give us 10% fund balance, we'd be needing to set aside $350,000 a year, which may or may not be realistic in the coming few years. So I'd like to come back to you with a recommendation. I wanted to at least give you the policy, let you read it, make sure you're comfortable with the way that it's worded. Again, this does very clearly outline, in addition to the statutorily required fund balance, which is Tabor. So we know that 3% is required to be set aside by Tabor. We're going to need to determine what's the amount that the board would like us to work towards, and then what's the period of time. This proposal says 10% in four years. Like I said, that would be far more than $350,000 for us to get there, and I don't know that that's realistic. And I don't want to put you in a position of passing a policy and coming and begging that we not get here to it. So that's really the key that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. Again, not asking for action, but wanting to at least alert you to your policy that drives that 2%, so that we can hopefully, over the next couple of meetings, come to what that amount should be, and what's the timeframe by which you're going to direct us as a district leadership team to get there. Questions?
So, this is Mary. So I have a question, and then a comment or thought at least, which may or may not make sense. But so, based on what you were just saying, Dan, so is, when you've got this 10% in there, did you, and then, and then you kind of mentioned 7%. So are you saying that whatever the, this 10% would include the 3% Tabor that's required, and that's the 10%? And if, is that true, first of all, that?
I would say the 10% is a dream before the harsh reality of our fiscal situation setting.
Yeah.
I'm a firm believer of actually more than 10%. I can tell you, my prior district, at the height, or when the recession kicked in in 2008, had a 21% fund balance. They did not have to cut any programs, and they ended up driving that fund balance down to about 12. So I think that's going to be the challenge, of what's that number that we can actually achieve?
Right.
We are a smaller district than the district that I'm referring to, so again, 10% might be the right number. If we kept it at 10% in addition to Tabor, my recommendation would be, we put out that deadline a couple of more years.
Right.
We couldn't do that in four years, but certainly, five, six, seven years, maybe.
Yeah.
So I think that's where we need to, we need to really process through, and certainly, I'd love to have individual conversations with each of you between now and the time we make that decision, to just kind of gauge your comfort level as well.
So Dan, 350... Sorry, Mary, go ahead, if you had more.
You, well, I was just gonna, so, the way this is worded, it kind of hit me as we go from this 2% that we're doing now, in, and don't do anything, don't do anything until 2026, and then all of a sudden, we're doing 10, is the way, I would interpret the way it's written now. So I don't know if that's the intention, or can we, should we do a graduated scale, so that like, from now, you know, in 2023 to '24 year, we do 4%? And then the next year, we do 6%? And up to the 10%?
The intent would be that we show progress working towards that ultimate goal in four years. So obviously, I would expect that you would hold me accountable to ensure that we increase that by 2% potentially next year. Again, not knowing where the state is, not knowing if we're going to hit a recession, not knowing what the state's going to do with future funding. If we had another increase like we had this year, we might be able to get there faster. The likelihood of that occurring, I don't have a lot of confidence in.
Yeah, yeah, really. So I don't know if it'd be good to put some language in there about a graduated scale of increase, or, because if I were just reading that without understanding at all, which, you know, obviously, it's, this is not my strength, but it just seems like maybe mentioning something about a graduated scale increase over the next four school years or something would be, make it clear.
There may be years where we can do more, there may be years where we can't do as much, and so that's where...
And maybe we could say minimum of, or something, or, I don't know, expect... Expected amount, or something, so that we're not held to specifically a 2% increase each year, but something to shoot for.
We have to show some progress.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, when I proposed this last week, it was, it was trying to put a stake in the ground and have something to talk about. Reality since that point has come to the, like I said, Bill, calculating 7%, which with our 3% Tabor reserve would get us to 10%. Again, we're talking about setting aside $350,000 a year, which, again, even in this year, we couldn't do right now, based on, based on our projection.
I think...
What, we, $350,000 a year for four years is $1.4 million. If we just extended it a year, it's $280,000, which is pretty close to where we are this year.
Right.
So if we did it over five years, you know, and we get additional funding next year, I think that's more doable.
Yeah. And again, your board policy, you as a board will always provide the guidance as to, you know, if we had a bad budget year next year, and we don't see that increase, you know, the reason we're setting that long-term goal is that we all kind of have, have a goal of getting there, and we're just going to have to continue to work in that direction. If we had a great year, where we had, you know, great growth in students and expenses were controlled, we might be able to accelerate in one year, but another year may not be able to do as much. So that's, you know, Mary, to your point, it is a little wishy-washy, and maybe intentionally so, just knowing that none of us can predict the future. But I like your concept of maybe we, we say minimum of 1% increase per year, with the goal being, maybe, to your point, Mike, maybe it's five years out, so that we have a little more manageable. And if in two years, we realize that that's an unrealistic goal, then we have to bring this policy back to you for further guidance.
Right. That sounds good.
So that's really, my intent was just to alert you to your policy, so you know where it is, why we're setting aside 2%, and just let you, you know, chew on it a little, as we all have been, trying to figure out what's the right number in there, so that we can be fiscally responsible moving forward.
Yeah. Sounds good.
The other thing I will add is, we, and I've shared this with a couple of you individually, we did have an exception through the state auditor. As Rebecca had indicated, prior leadership had over-projected development fees, and so we brought in less revenue each year, but still spent the amount. And so we've actually dug into fund balance the last two years, and the state has sent a letter to Bill as the interim superintendent, saying, "We'd like an explanation." We feel like this policy change is going to be part of that explanation, that our board recognizes that we can't continue to spend fund balance, but in fact, we should be generating additional fund balance. And so we are feeling as if this policy change will help us actually, help the state know we're taking this seriously, and that we're not just making excuses. We talked a little about development fees, and we will be bringing back to you in the fall, potential increase in development fees, based upon the fact that, right now, we're collecting very little on new homes that are impacting our district and our future population, and that the board has the ability of changing those fees. And so we'll want to talk more about that. And that would not be until the next school year.
So what, this is a stupid question, and I'm sorry. So what exactly do you mean by a development fee? I mean, what is...
So when a new home is constructed, the developer provides funding to the district in a lump sum. Right now, it's about $2,800, I believe, $2,818 or something like that.
Twenty-two if you include the cash in lieu of fee and the impact fee.
And the impact fee. So it would, it would be increasing the amount of money that we would be collecting for new homes, which gives us that advanced funding that would contribute towards potential future capital projects. Again, we've overestimated those, I think, two years in a row, and that's what's led to our, again, not achieving the revenue that we were expecting, but still spending what we projected.
Yeah, spending it. So we get to set, we get to say how much the development fee is?
You as a, as a board, do you have authority over that?
Over a portion of it.
Over a portion of it.
The cash in lieu of land fee is the portion that we can control. The other is through the county.
The impact fee is through the county, the cash in lieu of. So where we have a developer that we've said, we don't want land, but they're giving us money in lieu of land, that's the portion you have the ability of setting.
Okay. But sometimes, I mean, I think you've mentioned in some, some other evening, you said something about choosing land over the fee. Is that...
Correct. Yes, specifically in the Elizabeth West, because that's the only development right now on the horizon on this side of the district. We have land in Independence, we have land out in Sun Country. But we don't have any land on this side of the district, and so the Elizabeth West would be one, I'd be advocating that we transition to land instead of money, because we won't have land to build a school to relieve Running Creek as this side of the district grows.
But we do have land already in those other two developments?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep. The last item here on discussion is our Policy Review Committee bylaws. I will tell you, I had a lengthy conversation with Brad Miller. We have Bryce Carlson in the audience tonight, representing our legal firm. Brad does look forward to talking further with you at our retreat on Policy Review Committee. One of the, one of the issues that we really need to try to tackle is, how do we ensure that our policies align with legal requirements in statute, while still providing our community an opportunity of giving feedback through the Policy Review Council? So you have in front of you bylaws that we took from the Financial Advisory Council, just trying to put something in front of you of what that committee might look like. You'll see the proposed makeup in that document right now that we threw out, again, just to start some conversation. Tonight, really, I would say, is an opportunity for you to give us any additional feedback, but I am going to ask that we hold on bringing this back for formal adoption until Brad has a chance to engage with the full board on some of his thoughts and ideas around this process. One thing we didn't talk about in the budget is, the board budget does include CASB fees. So we have allocated money in the board budget. I've heard from some board members who are not sure they want to continue being a part of the Colorado Association of School Boards. That obviously would save $20,000, but one of the things we do currently get from CASB is policy updates. So when statutes change, CASB does send out, here's policies that have just changed based upon the updates. So that's the other aspect of Brad wanting to weigh in a little further on pros and cons of CASB, but also pros and cons of the Policy Review Committee as we move forward.
So I had a couple of questions regarding this, and I think it's a good, you know, I think it's a good definite start, but I agree with, you know, some things that you just said. But one question I would have is, and this probably goes for all of our policies related to any of these committees, when we've kind of said, you know, who, how many people should be on them, et cetera, and one question I have is, I mean, like, it's easy enough for, you know, somebody to be from, you know, one of the board members to be on there, but we're going to have to recruit, for all of these committees, we're going to have to recruit parents and community members. And, you know, you might be able to assign a teacher, and you might be able to assign a support staff, and then it says, recommended by the superintendent for both the school administrator and a district-level administrator. But that, you know, the ones that are a little, you know, are we going to get them? And, you know, we've gotten some really good engagement recently from the community, so this may not be a problem. But I guess my question is, if we don't have a full, if we don't have any parents yet, or if we don't have, especially, community members generally, might be a little harder, because, you know, a lot of people, kind of like I used to feel, it's like I don't have kids in the school district, so, you know, kind of not my problem thing. I mean, I have to admit that that used to be my thought. I just, you know, it's like, I don't have to worry about that stuff anymore. So if we can't recruit community members, but this says, the committee shall consist of, you know, that we should want community members.
If we still function as a committee, if you don't...
Yes. Can we do it?
I would assume, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, you would just, you would operate with a vacancy on that committee. We did advertise that. I'm trying to get in to see if, in fact, we have any applicants on those committees. The board briefs went out last week with the link to volunteer on all of those committees, so we may actually have applicants. I know I have two, two community members, one for Curriculum Review Council, and one for FAC that's already stepped up and expressed interest.
Yeah, and that's wonderful, yes. Well, that's good. I will be honest and tell you, this one, I mean, this is kind of my thing, this is what I did for a living, but this is not the favorite thing of most people to do, reviewing documents and, you know, all of this stuff, so...
Same thing about finance, right, Mike?
That's right. It's not dry.
Yeah. So, you know, Mary, I think there's people like you. Like that type of thing, just like there's people who like the finance side of it. And so I think these can still operate based off of whoever we have, and there'll just be vacancies, and that's going to probably be a normal thing in our small community, but, you know, we'll fill them as we can, and we'll operate with whoever we have.
As long as it can operate. I just didn't want it to stall if we don't have a full complement. And then... It does say, somewhere in here, it says that the meetings need to be open to the public, which is fine. Are we going to need to record them, like we do a board meeting?
No, they are not, they are not, they are not meetings that have to be open meetings, where they're posted and recorded. I think we've committed to posting minutes from each of these committees, but Bryce brought that up, I think, at the last meeting, was, these are not subject to open meetings laws that the board is.
Okay. That's good. And then, I mean, I guess, there's also a place where it says, two times annually, that the committee has to report to the board. I just wondered if that was, I mean, at least, you know, based on the one meeting that Bill and I and Rebecca and some other people were involved in, you know, what those comments were kind of brought up by, through our discussion. So I'm not really sure how much more, you know, I guess maybe just the Policy Review Committee reviewed policy, ABC and DEF and whatever they all are, and those were subsequently passed by the board or something. I just, I just wonder if, you know, an actual, and two times annual report to the board is, is going to be all that useful, when I'm sure that some of that information will come up as we're talking about policies to discuss or to pass them, or approve them.
Yeah. I think those are definitely points we can talk about, whether that's necessary or not. I think you want board committees to keep the board up to date. Obviously, you'll be able to as well, because each of you are represented on one of those... be able to as well, because each of you are represented on one of those. So certainly something we can modify on any and all of these would be whether, whether we need that level of update to the board.
Right.
I will tell you good news. Curriculum Review, we have seven applicants already.
Oh, wow.
So that's the one that I was able to get open. So-
That's great. Good. Yeah. I'm excited.
And then one other thing, it says in, in August, the board is supposed to give the list of policies to the council for review. And I, you alluded a minute ago to CASB. And I remember Bill talking in the, in the meeting that we were, that we had about, CASB has recommended changes to XYZ policies, policies. And so those are the ones that Bill was trying to bring up before the board to, you know, discuss and review and stuff. Does CASB sort of do this on a once annual basis, or?
They release, they release updates multiple times a year, based upon legislation and their work. They obviously prioritize based upon when things go into effect. Certainly, Miller, Farmer, Carlson Law also offers a level of support as well for policy changes as they occur. So if we don't have CASB, we certainly have our legal firm. And again, that's, that's a conversation we're going to need to continue to have to come to some conclusion.
And then, and then it just seems like the board should, because sometimes just things come up among ourselves, you know, as a board, as we're discussing something else, we realize that some other policy isn't quite in alignment with something we've just done, and, and all of those kind of things. So we need to be sure that we are allowing for all of that, too. And I'm sure that would be part of just the list. But I guess, kind of a one time a year list of policies seems like a big ask, you know, especially when, who knows when a law is going to go into effect, and CASB is going to say, oh, by the way. And so, I don't know, it just seems like a one time a year in August, here's your list, Policy Review Committee, have at it, is a little, you know, unrealistic, I guess.
Yeah.
Those charges certainly can, can come, come at different times during the year as well. But definitely all, all good points. I think, again, we took the FAC. I think in August, the board's going to be able to identify the key charges for FAC. And we took, we took this set of bylaws from that. So I think those are some key things that probably need to be realigned.
Okay.
Mary.
Cool.
Good point.
May I say something really quick? Just a suggestion. It's a little different from FAC, where I feel like having just one district-level administrator is good for permanency. But you might want to add a suggestion where you can add others based on the topic of the policy.
It's actually in there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it allows ad hoc, ad hoc members, the superintendent or his designees shall chair the, it's there someplace, isn't it, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
First, the last page was-
I was looking at the worst of-
So it allows, like, if we're talking about a, a policy that deals with facilities, we're definitely going to want Marcos there because of his expertise. So-
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. Good point, though. Okay, so this, again, will not come back to you. And so certainly let us know if there's any other recommendations. Feel free to send us an email with any other adjustments. We'll track changes from this version on. And then we'll have this as a topic. We'll probably have all of our board committees as a topic on our agenda in July with our legal counsel president. I think that's all the discussion items.
Now, we're moving on to action items. So first up is staffing recommendations for classified staff for the 2324 school year. So we have the classified assignments and salary placement for the 2324 school year. Those are in your attachments. So can I get a motion to approve Action Item 10.1, Staffing Recommendations for Classified Staff for the 2324 school year?
I'll make the motion.
Is it 10.1 and 10.2?
No, one's classified, one's cert.
Oh, thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay. The motion for staffing recommendations for classified staff for the 2324 school year has been approved. Next up, 10.2, Staffing Recommendations for Certified Staff for the 2324 school year. So, yeah, so moved. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Can I get discussion? Discussion? Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay. Action item 10.2, Staffing Recommendations for Certified Staff for the 2324 school year has been approved. Next up, 10.3, can I get a motion to approve changes to policy GBGH?
I, oh, I guess I need a motion first. So moved.
If I can jump in and just explain this first. So Certified Sick Leave Bank is, is managed by our Teacher Advisory Council. They had an application come in that alerted them to a situation that was not covered in their sick leave bank. And that's for maternity or paternity. And what they're proposing be added is that they could grant up to 10 days from the sick leave bank for maternity or paternity. For some of our younger staff in particular, who don't have the accrual, it is a small step to help those individuals through that particular leave time. And so they are recommending that change be added. There was also a mislettering. So we had an A, B, D, E, F. We had no C. And so they're also taking advantage of the opportunity of correcting their lettering scheme in this particular policy. So that's their request. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question with regard to paragraph A. Sick Leave Bank will be administered by the TAC, which is fine, and which the TAC will be composed of two certificated staff members from each building, two Board of Education members and the superintendent. So my question is kind of back, you know, what, what Bill just highlighted, the two Board of Education members. So my understanding, I think we talked about the TAC in the last meeting or two, I can't remember. And I, I looked and I didn't, I did not see, and I think in answer to my question about, is there a policy for the TAC? I think I was, I think the answer was, there is no policy. There is not a need for a policy for the TAC. I guess because they're sort of an internal, they're not exactly an advisory board, a board to the board, so to speak. They're kind of a self-accountability group. Is that true, first of all?
That's correct. It's a, it's a elected-
Council of Teachers. They, they elect their members to TAC. We have added, John will be the board representative to TAC and CAC, the Classified Advisory Council as well, starting next year. So we will have a board member directly attending their meetings moving forward.
So that is what-
So this thing says two Board of Education director, members. So if we've got one, if John is going to do it, that's fantastic. But we need to have this changed to one Board of Education member then.
Yeah. And actually, what we're doing is, we're bringing it to the full board for approval. So, so you could have two board members meet with them and approve this without coming to the board. The process seems to have been that, that when they recommend, they bring it to the full board and the board act. So actually, you're exceeding two board members. All five of you are weighing in. So certainly, we can make that modification as well. It's a good opportunity for us to do so.
Okay. I guess it does say, the last-
It does say it'll come to the board. So it just seems like, I don't know, it just seems to me like having those two Board of Education members in there as the council, the TAC shall be composed of, it doesn't jive with reality and what we've decided now. So I think we need to edit that, you know.
The TAC ended in their previous meeting that they, at the beginning of the year, they would like to focus on a complete evaluation of this policy all the way through. So-
I wonder, Mary, are you suggesting that we go ahead and change this to one Board of Education member right now, and then we'll let, let TAC have the opportunity of coming back with any other revisions? Would that, would that meet your thoughts right now?
I, I think so, because, I mean, this is, without another policy saying who has to be on the TAC, this is kind of making a requirement for the TAC that isn't in any other policy. And it's not something that we would be fulfilling based on a recent decision to have one board member on there. So I just think that two needs to be changed to one.
Okay.
To be accurate.
We'll just need to, I think you made the motion, so are you willing to change your motion?
Yes. So, so do I?
I move to amend the previous motion to include a change in paragraph A, changing two board members to one board member in the Teacher Advisory Council.
I agree, Mary.
Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay. We've approved changes to policy GBGH. Next up, 10.4, Approval of Skyward School Management System as our new district finance HR software. So can I get a motion to approve Skyward School Management System as our new district finance HR software?
So moved.
One more second.
Discussion?
So just real quickly, outline for the board that our current system is sunsetting this year. They're no longer supporting it. It's been a very, very basic system. So again, back to my compliment for Rebecca, a lot of the monthly financials is done by hand because of our current system and the way that reports are generated. We're excited about Skyward. Skyward is a relatively new system in Colorado. Several districts adopted it last year. We've gotten great reviews from those districts. They also are, are more fiscally responsible, if you will, in that most of the systems require the full implementation fee during the first year. They're spreading their implementation fee out over three years. So it's no, no more than any of the other systems, but we're only paying a third this year, which saves our budget. So we're excited about it. It will provide both Rebecca and John Rogerson, our new HR director, a system to more accurately track their areas of responsibility and be able to get better at pulling back out of those systems. We did evaluate multiple systems. I think we, we looked at three, the systems overall. And this was a system that the team chose.
Unanimously.
Yep.
That's great. Okay. Can I get a roll call? Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay. Board has approved the motion to approve Skyward School Management System as our new district finance HR software. Next, we have Action Item 10.5, Approval of Counselor's Salary Schedule. Can I get a motion to approve Action Item 10.5?
Sure.
One more second.
Don't think there's a whole lot of conversation here. Just, we have adjusted that salary scale, as we have all the others. This one's just coming to you separately. Just ask your-
How come it's coming separately?
I think it was just a matter of our getting it produced and all the figures changed.
It was a timing, because when we did all the other certified, we were still, we wanted to have conversations with the counselors since we were changing the contract base. So it just kind of got skipped over with the other certified. So it was timing.
We don't want something to come to you without our staff knowing what was being proposed.
So this fell under the certified?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the same change as teachers.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a roll call? Director Booth?
Aye.
Director Callahan?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Powell?
Aye.
Director Waller?
Aye.
Okay. The motion to approve Counselor's Salary Schedule has been approved. All right. Now we're up to board planning and new business. So our next board meeting is going to be June 12th. It's going to be a business session here in the boardroom, starting at 6:00 PM. We're looking at a date of July 31st, 2023, for our board retreat discussion plan. How does that date look for everyone?
It works for me.
What's your name?
July 31st.
July 31st.
July 31st. It's a Monday.
That's fun.
Okay. So, so during this, we'll actually work on a, a agenda that we'll probably bring to you, maybe at your last meeting in June. We'll have some time with Brad to do some board training, some conversations, strategic planning for us, work on the Parents' Bill of Rights, and kind of some coaching from Brad about next steps there. Also a chance, talked with Jason a little as well today about having a conversation about our communications plan for the board, and how you'd like to engage the community, and how we can support that. So we, we see a, a pretty packed day. This was a date we had set for a July board meeting, and felt like we could probably accomplish a little more. We are proposing that we use the Highway Retreat Center. It is not too far from here. It's a great location for us to have a retreat, as well as a chance, they, they do serve lunch. It's very reasonable compared to some of the other conferences that, that board members have been encouraged to go to. So I think it's about $30 a person. So it's really reasonable for space and lunch to be provided. So with that, we did confirm it's available. We just need to get back to them on number of people. And so we'll look at what other staff we need during what kind of day.
So this is nine, nine in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon on the Monday?
We're proposing that, thank you.
Four. And obviously, if we don't need all the time, we'll give you some time back. But if we can plan nine to four, I think we can accomplish what we need to do.
I think, no, I-
Yeah, I think that'll be good. It's a beautiful place. I've been there. It's really cool.
Will we still have a board meeting that evening, then?
No, this will-
Make the place of your board meeting. So it would be, instead of a business meeting, it would be a working session. You have a business meeting one week later. So, so anything that you decide you want to act on, it'll be a backup one week later. So-
So does this need to be public somehow?
It will be published publicly, so that people will know that you're in a retreat and location. It will be open to the public. If anyone chooses to drive there, certainly people are welcome to it then.
Okay.
Live stream?
We would not live stream a retreat. So, yeah. Okay. The last item, I'll just jump ahead to that. We did want to put on your calendars. We'll confirm this tomorrow. We really would like to celebrate the kickoff of next school year. I think it's, it's important for us to do. The district has done a pinning ceremony where they are issuing pins for our five-year returning staff, 10 years, et cetera. We'd like to make it more of a celebration, think of a pep rally. And this is something that we would also engage our community. We wanted to get that date out to you. Right now, it is August 9th. We're either looking at a start of the day at eight o'clock or at 10:30, which would lead to lunch with staff. So really wanting to get that date on your calendars, if you can, if you can join us. I think it's important for all of us to be together to kind of set expectations for the coming year and kind of our goals and objectives. So I wanted-
Is there, is there another day we could do it? Because I'm, I'm traveling back from being out of town that day.
We're actually going to talk-
With principals tomorrow. That's a date that's been published on the district calendar. We, we really have a desire to do it the first day that people are back, which would be the 7th. Would you be in town on the 7th, or are you gone also on the 7th?
I'm out the 4th, then I come back the 9th.
Okay. Okay.
And it's, you know- It's okay. And Mike, obviously, we want you there. But obviously, we don't need you changing any vacation.
Sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll confirm tomorrow. We're going to, again, bring it to, to school. We'd like to do it before school starts. And I think school starts shortly. I think we have eighth or sixth and, sixth and ninth graders back on the 11th.